Welcome to the General Election Forum for the City of Tacoma, Districts Two and Four. I am Liz Knox, the moderator this evening, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium, I welcome the candidates and the audience to this community candidate forum. At this time, I want to introduce Maureen Fife from the Affordable Housing Consortium to talk about the consortium. So Maureen, your turn.
Thank you. So candidates and to the moderator and our attendees, thank you so much for joining us tonight. I'm Maureen Fife, the CEO of Habitat for Humanity and the president this year of the Tacoma Pierce County Affordable Housing Consortium. The consortium's mission is to provide public education and advocacy in the support of affordable housing development in our community. So to further this mission, we have been honored to annually partner with the League of Women Voters of Pierce County to host candidate forums focusing on housing issues. And this is the first of four virtual candidate forums for 2021, and we hope you'll join us for the others in the future. Thank you, everyone, for being involved in affordable housing, and now I'd like to turn it over to the moderator.
So back to me. A little bit about the League of Women Voters, where a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 100 years has been to empower, inform, and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website, In ballot order, the candidates with us tonight for Tacoma City Council Position Two are Sarah Rumba and Kelly Butcher. For Position Four, Catherine Ushka was able to join us. Israel James McKinney is also a candidate for Position Four, but he did not respond to the invitations this evening. This year's general election is November 2nd. Ballots will be mailed out on Friday, October 15th, if you are a registered voter. If you are not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote.wa.gov by October 25th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website again at Questions have been prepared by the Affordable Housing Consortium. We invite live audience questions via text to this number, Again, 253-861-6824. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Terry Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15, and when it is time to stop. Candidates, when you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper Terry Baker. Please do not talk unless it is your turn. Please mute yourselves when it is not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask you to each confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues, not other candidates or their positions. Please confirm now that you agree.
Indeed.
Agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of the questions will rotate, and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. The order of the opening two-minute statements is in ballot order. We'll begin with Sarah Rumba. Sarah, your opening statement.
All right. Thank you for inviting us to this forum. My name is Sarah Rumba. I'm running for Tacoma City Council District Two. And I chose to get into this race because I care about my community and believe that the issues that I'm talking about and care about are ones that my district and our city care about. Affordable housing is one of the number-one things that I'm running on. Homelessness, the environment, creating jobs. They're all the things that we need to do as a community. And I am so certain that I resonate with my community because I have been out to the doors, meeting with people, hearing their stories, and they want someone who understands that we are at a situation where we need to take care of these issues now. We've put them off for a long time, and now they're becoming crisis. And I believe that we need people who are leaders and have experience. I was a city planner. I have nonprofit experience. I'm ready to get going day one with the relationship experience I have and my ability to communicate and to collaborate with others in the community. I've gotten some great endorsements in my race. I've just got endorsed by the Washington Conservation Voters, but also the Master Builders Association has endorsed me. So I'm being endorsed on both sides because they know that I'm someone who can work with anyone. I thank you for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to being able to answer questions if there are any. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and now it's Kelly's turn. Kelly Butcher.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kelly Butcher, candidate for Tacoma City Council District Two. I'm very excited to be here today, of course, nervous as always as a first-time candidate. I think that's a thing. You know, I'm in this race because of my experience. Because with my family, I've experienced homelessness through addiction and certainly struggled to find not only a livable wage, but affordable housing myself. I'm absolutely a proven advocate in our community, having advocated at local, state, and federal levels around issues involving, you know, around childcare, which is so important for our working families. My gift is absolutely in collaboration. I come from the nonprofit community and have done several things as far as bringing our community together, creating job training programs, hiring events, and really just bringing our community together on a collaborative level for things like ending homelessness, housing affordability, certainly treatment and addiction, and really passionate about creating spaces for our children to learn, work, and thrive, and certainly around education. The community support I've received is absolutely amazing. I think it's time that on City Council, we have a candidate who represents the actual needs of our community, not by assumption, but 100% by lived experience. And again, I'm so excited to be here today and look forward to the questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly, and now it's Catherine Ushka's turn. Catherine?
Thank you, and thank you all for hosting this this afternoon. My name is Catherine Ushka, and for the last four years, I've been proud to represent the mighty East Side and South End of the Forest District of the City of Tacoma. And I'm running for election for a number of reasons. I can tell you that right now we are facing unprecedented issues in health, human services, economics, and social challenges. I have the unmatched policy experience to address these complex issues effectively. Daily, I prioritize the calls that I get from you, my constituents, and I've streamlined systems and response times. I'm restoring neighborhood-level planning efforts on an equity basis. I'm excited that the city actually just brought that staff on board in the last week or so. When the city offered small loans for businesses suffering from COVID-19 closures, I hand-posted multilingual information to businesses throughout the district so that people that were affected would know how to get help and that they too were eligible for it. On the Tacoma Pierce County Board of Health, I championed a resolution declaring racism as a public health crisis and for anti-racism, earning unanimous support in that bipartisan space. Also, while leading grassroots, or successfully grassroots efforts last year and actually saving our health department. And I've prioritized fundings to core services and the budget outfall from the pandemic in the city. In housing and homelessness, I've done a lot and will continue to do significant work related to affordable housing and the unsheltered people in our community. I co-sponsored the Affordable Housing Tax almost as soon as it was available, and the city has significantly increased shelter bed capacity in the last year or so. There's, we're looking for new partnerships like we've done at Arlington Drive. We're driving towards purchasing a hotel in partnership with Lakewood and the county in Lehigh. And I'll tell you that there's still significant work to be done. It's why I'm on the Eviction Prevention Learning Lab with National League of Cities. We have an opportunity to keep people in their houses in the first place. I will continue to prioritize this critical issue and find innovative ways to meet it across partners in our city. And I'm again grateful for your hosting this forum, and I look forward to the dialogue with my colleagues tonight.
Thank you all, and now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. Again, the live audience can text questions to 253-861-6824. The candidate order will rotate with each question so that for question one, we will start with Kelly Butcher. Here's the question. Please offer your view of what should be the city's role in addressing its shortage of affordable housing for residents and shelter and services for its residents who are homeless. Kelly?
Great question. You know, it's no doubt that homelessness is on the rise in Tacoma. Just about everywhere we drive now, we're seeing more and more tents on the streets. I think we also have this looming end to the eviction moratorium, which is only going to increase those that are unhoused. I think it's important that we're keeping people in their homes, continuing with programs such as rent assistance and sending out materials consistently and doing, you know, getting out there and doing that outreach work for things like assistant, well, rent assistance, 211, legal help, and so on. I think it's important that we work closely with Pierce County on the comprehensive plan to end homelessness, and that's built predominantly by people working within our homeless system, which I think is so important. I think we need to look to city-owned properties that can possibly be utilized for things like shelter, tiny homes, public housing, and so on, and certainly providing funding to organizations doing diversion services and rapid rehousing as well as permanent supportive housing. I think it's going to take a huge effort between nonprofit-for-profit businesses and community to address our homeless crisis, and I absolutely believe that our city should facilitate this.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. The city's role is really to use the resources before us and our relationships and influence to maximize housing in every possible way that we can. There's many ways that we can do that, and there's new tools in our box just this year. I mentioned the Affordable Housing Tax. We have the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We need to promote policies also that direct housing to those that are most in need. We have tremendous disparity both in housing and housing precarity within our community, and we're going to need to take bold steps if we're going to have any way of addressing that effectively. So there's ways that we can also partner and make sure that we're maximizing the use of existing funds across our partners for the greatest amount of capacity. There's ways that we can effectively address it through zoning policies, increasing shelter capacity and the variety of shelter options that are available because there's not a one-size-fits-all approach to individuals that need houses. Services for all these should be part of the city's work, and along with that, I think it's very important that we continue our work to partner with state and federal partners to find additional resources and do things like make sure that the pay that people on disabilities get gets increased because it hasn't kept up in workforce in 20 or 30 years. So there's lots of roles that we play as a city and a city council members. It's imperative that we stay crystal clear on what our focus is, and that is to make sure that everybody that lives in the city of Tacoma knows that they deserve and does have a safe and happy place to live, play, and call home here in the city of Tacoma.
Thank you, Sarah.
I see it kind of as a twofold question. One is about affordable housing and another is about homelessness. And do we have a housing crisis? Yes, we do. We just don't have enough housing stock, and we need to create more housing stock to meet the growth that we see coming to our city. Housing is a continuum, meaning we need to have all types of housing, not just rentals, but affordable units. People can purchase duplexes, triplexes, condominiums, and it kind of ties into where we are with the environment. By creating more density, we also are able to protect our county and keep our growth management boundary lines where they are. That's like that sustainability by having a better walking city with more density. As far as homelessness goes, there are reasons people become homeless. The cost of housing, evictions, domestic violence, loss of jobs. We as a city need to reach out and provide a place for people to be safe. My argument is that we need to be doing sheltering through nonprofit, not just, we need to be looking at housing first, like rapid rehousing produces positive outcomes. We need to provide someone a door, be it a tiny home, a motel, hotel room, where they can stay and get the services they need. And I believe that that's the humane way to treat people. Some will take more services and may never be able to leave permanent housing and may need this for their lives. And that's that model of nativity house. And I believe that sheltering people should be something that the city should be doing, and I hope as a city council member, I can do that.
Thank you. Our next question. The Home in Tacoma Project's goal is to create a housing growth strategy to support more housing supply, choice, and affordability. Do you support the Home in Tacoma proposal? Why or why not? And for this, we'll start with Catherine.
Thank you. I do support the Home in Tacoma Project, and I think that there's a lot of work that we need to do on it to make sure it works right. Right now, Home in Tacoma is about changing zoning. And I can tell you from the multi-use centers that we designed 20 years ago that not had any development at all that we need to pair that with things that actually create development, right? Opportunities for even low-scale development in our single-family neighborhoods would maximize capacities in ways that we haven't imagined. We need to look at things like our MFT and the new option for a 20-year exemption that also includes a requirement for ownership opportunities and figure out how we can partner with people, both not-for-profits and for-profits, to make sure that affordability remains at our community, not just today, not just 12 years from now, and not just 20 years from now, quite frankly, because we're always going to have people that are on different parts of the income scale. I definitely think that we need to look at ways that we can further incentivize development, and some of that's going to be things like looking at the zoning map through an equity lens and looking at concurrence of utility structures. The idea of growth in the urban centers is that we already had the infrastructure, but a lot of our infrastructure is way past overdue to be revised. So how do we invest in that as a community, perhaps with some of the federal funding coming from the Biden administration to make sure that we can build in those areas that desperately need development and services? So I think that there's lots of options available to make it better, and I'm working along with my colleagues to help drive innovation, and I look forward to one of these final meetings to be with me.
Sarah. I think.
There you go. Okay, great. No matter what you think of Home in Tacoma, we need more housing. I do support Home in Tacoma. Right now, people are being displaced because of the cost of housing. The average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in Tacoma right now is $1,539, which is 11% increase compared to the previous year. We're seeing people of color displaced right now without adding housing. By adding a continuum of housing choices for rent and for purchase, we add housing stock to create affordable housing units. There is a supply and demand issue right now. There's not enough supply for the needs, so prices are driven up. By adding more housing stock, we create more of those affordable units. In addition, if the city adds affordable units by purchasing some with our Affordable Housing Tax dollars and through Housing Trust Fund grants, we might be able to catch up with the demand, equity, displacements, et cetera. So many issues that intersect, but bottom line is, we need more options, no matter what you name it. People need places to live, and we have the responsibility of helping make it happen faster. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, thank you so much. Home in Tacoma, what a question as you're running for office this cycle, let me say. I do support Home in Tacoma. I think growth is happening, and we must prepare. We do need to increase housing. Absolutely agree with that. I think as Home in Tacoma currently stands, I would support the low-scale model utilizing duplexes, triplexes, and so on to increase our missing housing supply with that provision for growth. I do believe, or I don't, I'm sorry. I don't believe that we can blanket the mid-scale growth across our entire city. I just see holes in the affordability of built units. I think we need to look closely at where mid-scale is feasible and a viable option. Agree, along major transit centers in areas where infrastructure may already exist. I certainly think that it's so crucial that we increase homeownership opportunities, and I am going to say that repetitively throughout these questions. I think, again, there's just not that one-size-fits-all solution to our housing crisis. I think Home in Tacoma is a wonderful, beautiful start to increasing our housing supply. And I think as somebody myself who, again, has experienced homelessness and currently is a renter in the North End, I know I need, you know, I would like to see more affordable housing options. Of course, our dream is also to own a home. But I think that we need to take the profit motivation out of affordable housing. As long as there's a profit motivation to this, it's not going to be affordable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question. Which policy tools available to the city council would you like to utilize to create more affordable housing? And for this, we'll start with Sarah.
Okay, am I unmuted? I think I am. Okay. We have a lot of, see here, we have a lot of opportunities. How do we bring that to individuals and organizations to collaborate? We need people who are collaborators and know how to bring people together to work on these issues. We need, let's see, I want to make sure I'm on the right question, actually. I think I am. Here we are. Okay. Let's see, we have a lot of opportunities, and some of them are, we need to explore bold new ideas like loans to help create affordable housing for developers who agree to help fight this crisis. We might promise a 0% or lower percent loan where the developer keeps the units affordable for 30 years. This could be units at 30% of AMI. People seem really happy with townhomes. We should open the door for builders who want to build these types of units. ADUs definitely are something that we are doing. The MFT of 12, of 12, which allows for 20% of units for affordable. What about changing it from 12 years and then disappearing from affordable, the affordable housing market? What about making it 15 or 18 years, they can maintain the units as affordable? The affordable housing we create today will be the affordable housing we have in 10 years. We can use House Bill 1590, which is the 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing, to bond against it to acquire already-built new units for affordable or even low-income housing. They just did that in Seattle. They purchased three brand-new apartment complexes for low-income housing. So those are some of my ideas that I would like to work on at, on the city council.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. So I think some of the policies that we can certainly utilize on city council to create more affordable housing are certainly policies that support and promote homeownership, particularly towards people of color. I absolutely support the 1/10th of 1% Affordable Housing Tax and believe we should look at opportunities to multiply that those dollars brought in. We should look at developing policies to support permanent affordability. And of course, I mean, we talk affordable all the time, and I have to, I have to do it in quotations because I think we need policies that reduce the definition of affordable housing. I think it's crucial that we listen to and act upon the recommendations of our commissioners and our committees tasked with giving us feedback on all of this as well. I've read through hundreds and hundreds of pages of comments and feedback from not only our community, but our commissioners, and that's one of the things that I hear very often, too, is that, you know, we put suggestions forth, and sometimes we don't feel like we're heard. So I think it's so important that we're listening to them because these are representatives of our community, and truly, our community is who is also going to help us tackle affordable housing and getting more units out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you. I think I heard you ask which tools do we have available and which ones would I utilize? And I'll tell you, if we're not using every tool in the box in every new way possible, then we're not doing it right. One of those that have been mentioned a couple of times is the Affordable Housing Tax, which I did co-sponsor, and it was passed unanimously by the council almost as soon as it was available from the legislature. But that's just part of it, right? We have the opportunity to expand the MFT to a 20-year. We have the opportunity to use tax incremental financing. There's some challenges about some of the ways that those are set up, and we should work with our legislator to make changes for the ways that we want to see them work. One of the ideas that I have is trying to look at properties that are ripe for development and areas of need, and how do we create a way that we cannot just do a 20-year ownership opportunity, but can we use the Affordable Housing Tax to buy out a couple floors? So we make sure that we have mixed-opportunities that actually drive the services and resources that communities in need, communities in need, like grocery stores in the food deserts, like the one I live in. So that's important. We can make sure that there's feasible opportunities as we go through low-scale development, so we have more opportunities for ownership. We can change the affordability rate to be for Tacoma rather than for Pierce County as it is now, which would change it a lot. So there's lots of opportunities for us to use the tools that we have now in more innovative ways. We have to be courageous. We have to push hard, and when we can't get it done, we need to work with our state and federal legislators because people are depending on us, and there's not another option. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next question. We often hear that market-rate developers need to play a part in solving our affordable housing crisis. What role do you see market-rate developers playing in addressing this issue? And for this, we'll start with Catherine.
Thank you. I'm going to start with going back to something that Sarah said in beginning, and that housing is a continuum, right? And so there's a certain market economics to housing as well. This country has underbuilt housing for the last 20 years. So we need to work with market-rate developers to make sure that we have greater inventory across all levels because just like anything else that's bought, sold, or traded, when there's more on the market, the price comes down. That said, we still need innovative ways to work across those development communities to make sure that we build affordability for mid-income, low-income, very low-income, and people that need permanently sustainable housing. Ideas, like I said, you asked it a moment ago. Can we work with people to look at an MFT in a realtor center and purchase a few floors in the building using our housing tax? I don't know, but I think it's certainly worth investigating. Are there ways that we can look at streamlining permitting or making sure that we're funding the infrastructure improvements in areas that need it? And again, I know that I'm repeating myself, to incentivize that development with those market-rate developers. When they say that they can't afford to build it, it's not necessarily because they're trying to make a profit. Ultimately, it's going to cost the same thing to build the unit here on the east side as it does right in the middle of Proctor, and they need to be able to pay for the materials and get a rent that makes sense to get the funding for their loan in the first place. We need to have a comprehensive understanding of that, not vilify them for the work they do, but invite them to partner for us. For developers, when there's people that are experiencing crisis, they're part of our community, too, and it doesn't work for them either. So let's all work together on those best solutions.
Thank you, Sarah.
So I wanted to say that, you know, developers are not bad people. They're part of our solution, and we have to work with everyone in our community to make, make housing happen. And their job is to, is to build housing, and that's what they're there for. And affordable housing happens when you create a lot of different types of housing. There are things that we could do as a city to work with the developers. One is, like I said, we could work with the $1,590 that we have, which is the 1/10th of 1% for affordable housing that they passed just recently on the city council, which was awesome that they did that. With that, we could purchase possibly, like I mentioned, the city of Seattle, they just purchased three buildings, brand-new apartments. That means they're not taking affordable housing units off the market. We're adding some. And like you said, when you, when you own it, then you can control that it stays affordable. Another idea I have is when we're working with developers is that because we put in public infrastructure as, as we have with the light rail, and then we're going to have in the dome, we're going to have the light rail, we could look at doing things where we require the developers to make, to include that housing there. The other thing that we could do is allow them an LID for 20 years for the infrastructure, so they're not having to pay it all out front, which is something that our city does right now. That would be something that might be more developer-friendly and might make it not as cost prohibitive to put some of this housing in.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you. This question. You know, I believe that market-rate developers should be mandated to create affordable housing units. Now, I don't know if that's a certain percentage, if that's 15, 20, 25% on so on, or so on. I think it's imperative that they absolutely play a role in, in creating and building affordable housing. I don't think that we should necessarily solely rely on tax incentives and the benevolence of developers to increase affordability. I think we, we also need to look again at what is market rate? Is market rate attainable to those who are on a low wage or at a minimum wage or a fixed income? And I'm just, I think we need to define these terms a lot more clearly, affordable market rate. And I'm just, I think we need to define these terms a lot more clearly, affordable market rate and so on. Because it just, it's not, it's not a blanket category again. So I know it's probably not the most popular opinion, but I absolutely think we should mandate affordable housing. We've got to create more affordable or more low rate housing for people to get into.
Thank you. Our next question. In the last two budget bienniums, the council has allocated more than $2 million in total for the Affordable Housing Fund to provide housing assistance and create affordable housing units. If elected, what amount of funding would you support allocating to this fund? And why do you feel this is an appropriate allocation amount? And we'll start with Kelly.
You know, I think as it stands in our current housing crisis, we, we need to double or triple it and it still wouldn't be enough. I think we're fortunate to have additional funding through ARPA, our community block development grants. And of course, the one tenth of 1% housing tax. I think it's important that we continue to look at ways to maximize these funding opportunities and certainly be innovative and creative as far as going after more federal funding.
Thank you. Catherine.
Thank you. I, I was canoodled by this question. I don't think that, that there's really an easy dollar answer to put to that. When we started that trust fund, it was about really digging deep to find some cash to get it started. And I think it was coming out of the tiki devol- bolicle and making sure that we had ways to address situations where people were suddenly displaced. When we're looking at future councils or, and our, and our biennium and the ARPA dollars that we've received now, there's another 2.5 million coming out now. And I think three to five are probably going to be approved in the next round. And Kelly's right, and I'm sure that Sarah is going to agree, that's not necessarily going to be enough. Our resources are always going to be limited. So it's always going to be about how do we maximize our resources to the great end? How do we work with our federal and state partners to make sure that we're bringing costs down or increasing people's limited incomes where possible? And then how do we as a community come together to build those? And some of it's going to be things like community land trusts and some other things we haven't yet jumped into here. But I mean, the, the, anybody who has a roof over their head will tell you that regardless of the market value, being sheltered from the rain is priceless. Knowing that your loved ones are safe is priceless. So I don't care for this question because I don't think we can put a dollar amount on that. But I think it's that vision that needs to carry us and we need to be willing to be courageous and dig deep along the way. Thanks.
Thank you. Sarah.
I wasn't, I wasn't, yeah, I wasn't there when they decided on the $2 million to put into their trust fund, the housing trust fund. But I know that this is something that nonprofits have to worry about every day. Do we, how do we spend, do what we need to do today? And then have something for tomorrow. And I think we're in a dire place with our city and that we need to today make it may be purchasing what we need. And however we get that, we need to do it. And we have a lot of, we are a creative group of people with our city. And we need to find ways to build the housing or purchase or acquire the housing that we need right today. And if it means putting off, putting in $8 million into our affordable trust fund right now, then that's fine because we need to spend the dollars today because whatever we purchase today is the affordable housing we have tomorrow. And I know that these are hard decisions because it means not funding other things. But I believe having a door and a place to live is really important. And that we see people being displaced every day in our city because of the crisis we have. And everyone says we're going to end up like Seattle. We already are like Seattle because people are living on our streets. And we need to change that and make this a priority. So if 2 million is all we can do, I support that, but I want to see us purchasing and acquiring housing with the tools that we have today.
Thank you. Next question. As a council member, how do you envision yourself working with the state legislature through the city's annual legislative agenda and general advocacy to push for policies to support affordable housing development in Tacoma? And what are those policies you would like to see the legislature address? And for this, we'll start with Sarah.
Well, I'd like to see more money in our state housing trust fund. And if we could, you know, that way we have more dollars to match, which is good for us. Allowing cities to keep more of their real estate excise tax for affordable housing would be another tool that we would have. And then another one that I thought of is passing a law that allows municipalities to increase the real estate excise tax for their city, which helps close the gap on the cost for affordable housing. I know that may not be very popular, but that might be an idea of a way to raise more dollars for us to, for affordable housing. So I see myself as a city council member, working with our legislators to find ways to get the dollars we need for affordable housing. And these are some of the tools I had thought of.
Thank you. Kelly.
Thank you. Um, you know, I think advocacy at our, at our state level is something I've been doing and will continue to do to, in order to represent our community. I mean, there's some key policies that I would certainly like to see addressed, such as lowering our area media income index to shrink the gap of what is affordable. Having like permanent rent and mortgage assistance and certainly representation for people facing eviction. Increasing the number of vouchers that THA provides, increasing disability rates for, again, for those on those fixed incomes. I think it's important that we work closely with our legislative legislators across the state as our housing crisis is not unique. And again, as somebody with a personal voice and, and that, that experience, I think it's important that we're bringing that voice to our state legislators and really advocating for our community on what is needed. And there is power and voice. I know that and we know that. And I think that's certainly, I would, I would bring to the table there and, and love to advocate for our community.
Thank you. Catherine.
Thank you. I think this is a great question. And I just, I want people to know that we actually have a pretty strong legislative contingency. And we do a pretty good job working with our legislature. An example is the landlord tenant laws that we developed in the city of Tacoma. And I did a lot of work on that. That was about meeting with multifamily housing providers and, and not for profits. That was about meeting with tenants, organizing groups and, and people that were experiencing housing instability and bringing them together and coming up with ideas that were effective. A lot of the things that we put in place literally became the model for what became the state law, adding just cause over this past legislative session. And so that, that channel of communication is there. I agree with everything that both of the ladies on the screen have said already, and I appreciate their thoughts to it. I think as we come into this next legislative agenda and this next session, part of the things that I'm looking for, making sure that we're keeping people housed right now. We're going to need to think about continued rental assistance. And maybe not, you know, what we have a tendency to do in this country is, in this country and in Tacoma, is that we wait until somebody is houseless to help them. How do we make sure that their state funding, so that somebody's choosing between groceries and paying their rent? They can call somebody and make sure they keep that roof over their head, whether it's a mortgage or a rent. So that's part of the things that I'm working on, on now as well. I think that some of the things that I've talked about in relationship to the MFT, some changes to the condo laws, ensuring that we have opportunities for easy fee, simple opportunities to convert into home ownership, as well as changes to tax incremental financing are going to be imperative as well.
Thank you. This is a listener question. How will you show up for communities of color in your work on the council? We'll start with Sarah. Yeah, we'll start with Sarah. Did you hear the question?
How will I show up for communities of color when I'm, when I'm on the council? Well, first off, by being present and listening and knowing that I'm not the, you know, I was on the Human Rights Commission, so I understand that my job as a privileged white woman is to make sure they have a voice, but I'm not the one who's there to, to, to move it forward. I'm allowing them a place to be centered. And I would make sure that that voice was heard and that I reacted and supported their concerns. And I believe so strongly in that, that I'm supporting the two black women who are running for office right now, the women of color. Kiara Daniels and, 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 and I believe that they both are great candidates. And I believe that just by supporting both Anne Artman, I couldn't, sorry about that. And just by supporting them, I'm showing that they, that we need to have their voice on our city council. And that's where I would be as a city council member is to make sure that when I'm doing things, that I'm making sure that those voices are heard, that our commissions reflect the people who are in our community, the people of color. And that we are partnering and collaborating with organizations that represent the black community here in Tacoma and Pierce County.
Thank you. Kelly.
Thank you. How will I show up for communities of color? And I love this question. Thank you. As a person who's in a biracial relationship, I know that when I look out my doors in my particular district, I don't see very many families that look like ours. And I always have to ask myself why. I think along the lines of affordable housing, there's so much that we can, we can do to, to promote homeownership within our communities of color by expanding, you know, first time home buyers program and really removing the biases, the historical biases that have gone along with those programs. I think really connecting with, you know, the black collective, Tacoma Urban League and so many other organizations, Tacoma Ministerial Alliance, of course, with our commissions and really listening to that feedback. As a council member, I fully hope that I will be held accountable and, you know, to, to really represent our communities of color and know that I'm doing a good job. Now, to fully answer this question, I would, I would love to have the feedback of our community and how I could be a better representative. Because I don't think it's for me specifically to say. Now, I can say it as I would address it to my family and certainly those that I serve directly. But I think it's important that I'm consistently listening to our community and making sure that I am the best representative that I could possibly be. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine.
Thank you. I think this is a great question. I, I'm constantly trying to be a better ally, ally, knowing that I, every day I can be a better one than I was before. And sometimes I'm going to fail. And I've got to be able to own that failure and do better next time and not be afraid to speak it out loud. That speaking out loud is important because it's not just about me on council. It's about the white power structure, our community and being able to flip the script on that. You know, I, I supported the anti racism resolution across the Tacoma dais, as well as brought it unanimously to a bipartisan, to come up Pierce County Health Board. I've spoken equity into policy since my early days in, on the school board. And I continue to do so and making sure it's at the top of the line. And I say the top of the line because sometimes people will say, oh, it's okay. It's in our vision. It doesn't need to be in the top sentence of this policy. But I'll tell you, my experience is, is if we don't keep it in the forefront, 400 years of systemic racism tells me it'll be in the background. And if we're going to make substantive change in anti racist efforts, we need to be willing to look at policies and make bold investments. Some of those are going to be things like making sure we have translation services. Some of those are things like the housing disparity study that I asked the city manager to do, that will help us divert larger amounts of our, sorry, down payment assistance program to back black families to make sure that we're increasing homeownership. There's a multitude of ways that we can do this. I need to continue to listen. We need to make sure that everybody continues to listen. They're worth it. And I look forward to the opportunity to continue to try.
Thank you. According to the 2019 American Community Survey, only 30% of black households in Tacoma own their own homes, while 61% of white households own their home. What specific actions would you support and want to see implemented to begin to reduce this disparity? We'll start with Catherine.
Thank you. I think I've mentioned this a little bit. I'm aware of this, of this, of this fact that I started looking at policy actions that we could take at the beginning of the pandemic. And one of those was looking at how we can use the down payment assistance program and put a higher amount or a disproportionate amount towards African American families. And, and we need to make sure that the investments that we're making are disproportionately in favor of black families if we're going to make a difference. If we say it's equal, we're creating, creating an equal gap, gap into the future. If we only do a little bit here and then some over here, we're still, you know, it's going to be another 400 years before we come anywhere towards equity. So that study is going to help make sure that we can divert funds like that without being in breach of the Civil Liberties Act. And, and that's, that's a beginning. And I think we need to look at across all the things that we do and ways that we can make those sorts of investments. And it's not just, I mean, it's in housing, but it's also in housing precarity, right? We need to look at ways that we can streamline people's ability for eviction expungement. Or because if you look at the rates of eviction in Pierce County and in Tacoma in particular, they're higher among, among our black families than they are anyplace else in the state of Washington. And we should take that on as part of the dual crisis of racism and dual pandemic of racism and the pandemic. And we have to take bold steps. I'm looking forward to figuring out exactly what those steps are and taking them. I'm looking forward to have colleagues that are willing to have that courage with me.
Thank you. Sarah.
Well, I was really excited about this question because I didn't know. I, you know, working on the Human Rights Commission, we were studying as far as the Housing Equity Task Force, ideas for how we could do this. And this was just a wonderful exercise for me to find, to talk to people and find ways that we could help grow wealth in the black community. So some, the hard way to help families find ownership is loan products that can work around student loans. That would be a great thing. Their high, high debt to income tolerance, down payment programs for first time home buyers marketed to black families with additional closing costs, dollars included. Black households can't compete with this market right now, just like any other family who can't pay cash or $50,000 above asking prices. Some easy things that we could do would be to support programs like Home Ownership Centers and Habitat for Humanity to do specific work and engagement for black families. Give them land or houses to rehab for this specifically. They're doing the work, but just very slowly because they can't afford land in Tacoma. And we should be supporting black land trusts. Long-term changes need to happen. Job skills training, better educational opportunities, supporting the growth of black owned businesses and concentrating on the black communities. I think these are things that are long-term that we should be investing in as a city to create the wealth that's necessary based on the wrongs of the past as far as redlining that has happened in Tacoma.
Thank you. Kelly.
Yes, thank you. So I, you know, we have generations of disparity, redlining and historic oppression to make up for. I agree with Sarah. I think greater support of organizations such as Habitat for Humanity and Home Ownership Center are absolutely needed. We know that these programs work and, and they're certainly dedicated to our community. We need to increase homeownership all the way around. Until we are able to obtain assets that we can pass on to our family, we will never break the cycle of multi-generational poverty. Investing in the first time home buyers program. And again, I said this in the previous question, but we, in order to do that, we also must address the historic biases within this program. I think we can help more renters on a pathway to homeownership by providing financial education and certainly broadening the reach of down payment assistance for those first time home buyers. And certainly creative investments that allow for more black indigenous and people of color to own homes. And choose, I think this is so important too, that we're choosing the organizations that we're, that we're seeking to promote through. That, that is just so key that we're, we're, we're reaching out first to our communities of color on these opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last question for today, as a council member, how would you support nonprofit organizations and the Tacoma Housing Authority in developing the nearly 10,000 units of affordable housing that the Affordable Housing Action Strategy notes are required to serve demand by 2040? We'll start with Kelly.
Hi, thank you. So I think, you know, we must increase public housing. We just have to. So many people in our community live on those fixed incomes, work minimum wage jobs. You know, often don't get raises and struggle to work because childcare is so, is so, so expensive, often a lot of times more than rent or mortgage. So I'm committed to working with any organization that's going to assist in developing this affordable housing. And I think we have an amazing opportunity with strong partners such as THA, MDC, and so many others to really move the needle on much needed, low income units. So I think I'm absolutely supportive of all of that and would, would put as much effort into as, as possibly needed and more. And, and think we could collaborate more widely too, to develop. And and think we could collaborate more widely to to develop more units. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
I think this is a great question, and I think it's a great one for the end of this because I think we've talked about a lot of the tools and opportunities that we have before us. I can tell you that there's things that are in the pipeline now in terms of the Affordable Housing Tax that we started collecting in July. And Sarah, we haven't started buying things yet because we just started collecting it. As we look at, as I listen to Jeff Robinson's concepts of how we utilize that tax, he believes that we can leverage that tax so that those dollars multiply 16 to one. It's that work and making sure that we're working to also build the capacity of those nonprofit organizations, inviting new ones, as well as working with THA to make sure that that those come to be. I think that we have to get very serious about community land trusts, and we need to partner with the county and with the SHAPE Housing Organization that the mayor created with county leaders to make sure that it's not just Tacoma that's working on creating affordable housing. People need affordability throughout our county, and we need to be in partnership towards that end. There's always going to be places where people need subsidy in order to to subsidize the difference between building a house and people being able to afford it. And so, as I said before, that partnership with our federal government and our state government to make sure that we're maximizing those opportunities, like increasing the number of vouchers that THA has accessible to them to help Tacoma families is going to be essential. So I I think that that support is through that partnership and making sure that we're being transparent and we're driving innovation and asking for creativity across all those tools and communities. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
So interesting to hear Catherine's answers because it's so fun to see how people look at these questions and can kind of be talking about the same thing, but be talking about different parts of it. I saw this as that we, I want to find a way to make it easier for Tacoma Housing Authority and nonprofit organizations to develop in Tacoma. And so I I saw it as, are there ways for us to look at our zoning code or our building code to make, you know, to so that when the projects come in, we're ready for them so that they can be shovel ready to go? Is that something that we could do? Expedite timing and the coordination of inspections so things go quicker for them. Every dollar, there was a number I got from someone I talked to, and it was $400,000 a unit for the for the nonprofit when they have to use, you know, prevailing wages compared to $190,000 to build something for on the private market. So there's a disparity in what it costs to do public housing. And so anything we can do to make it simpler, I know that in the Build Back Better bill that, you know, that they're trying to, the package they're trying to pass, there's $350 billion allocated to building affordable housing. So we want to be poised to receive those funds, and the Housing Authority needs to have the funding they need to set this infrastructure in place. And so I would do what it takes to help it happen quickly so that they can get going on these projects.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements for one minute per candidate. They will be in the reverse of ballot order. We'll begin with Catherine Ushka.
Thank you so much. Again, my name is Catherine Ushka, and I'm looking forward to an opportunity to serve the fourth district, the muddy side in the South End for another four years. Before I was on city council, I served eight years on Tacoma School Board. And I joined when there was huge budget deficits and critical issues regarding graduation rates. As I came into city council, we had huge crises before us then, as we do today. It's not an easy time to serve, and I know it's not an easy time for any of people listening today. I have tremendous faith that the people of Tacoma and the people of District Four are better than the crises before us. I have more hope than I've ever had before in our ability to come together to address these crises and really capture this one time opportunity to make things different than they were before and correct the disparities that we have before us. I was, I have a number of endorsements that I'm proud of. I couldn't be more proud of the endorsement of a 61% return in a three way primary. And that's from those of you out there that are working hard in this district. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you tonight.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for having me at this forum today. And I'm I'm always so happy to be able to speak to our community members and those so engaged in in providing housing and affordable housing for our community. It's interesting, 15 years ago, I started this journey actually building houses with Habitat for Humanity. And here I am again, while then I was struggling with housing myself with a young son. I'm back today to advocate for affordable housing and certainly to ending homelessness. I think that we have the tools within our council and within our city and within our state to get this done. I think what we need is somebody with that lived experience. We can learn about policy, we can learn about codes, we can learn about zoning. But until we have that person on our council that absolutely knows what it is to sleep overnight in a shelter, to sleep outside in a car with a small child. You know, we really need that person to advocate for us on on these different policies and everything we're pushing through and to really ensure that every single person in Tacoma has a safe place to sleep. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
I'm going to take a second of my closure just to recognize that there are three women here today running for office and that I think it takes a woman's voice to be able to solve difficult things. And that's why I'm running for office as a woman. I think that I have a different way of looking at things and my perspective and my leadership, I believe, will be a positive asset to our city council. I think I resonate with my district. I understand what they care about, and I hear it daily at the doors. I just was out today talking to people and I'm in the pouring rain and listening to what their concerns are. Every one of them is concerned about home in Tacoma, but I always tell them that, you know, I'm going to listen to you. I know that the city council is listening right now, and that's why they have that plan in IPS. And they're thinking about what what you think is important as we move forward on home in Tacoma. So thank you so much for this opportunity to be here. I would be remiss as well if I didn't tell people that I actually am a member of the Affordable Housing Consortium. It is a great group, and I've learned a lot about affordable housing since I joined.
Thank you. This concludes our forum tonight. In ballot order, we have Sarah Rumba and Kelly Butcher, who are candidates for Tacoma City Council Position Two. Catherine Ushka was able to join us tonight. And she is a candidate for Tacoma City Council Position Four. Israel James McKinney did not respond to our invitations. You should receive your ballot and voter's pamphlet during the week of October 17. Be sure to vote early and no later than November 2. I would like to thank the candidates who were able to join us. The Timekeeper Terry Baker, the Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters, Maureen Fife, and the Affordable Housing Consortium for sponsoring this forum. You can see other League of Women Voter Candidate forums at www.tacoma-piercelvv.org. Be sure to read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do all you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before November 2. Thank you for joining us this evening and have a great night.